Before being present, this meeting is hereby called a quarter. Before we proceed with the list and the pledge of allegiance and all that, I'd like to tell them to take it for a second because we have one aspire to buy them there. So we have firemen and firemen from all over western Mass here to help us. And if we all think of them, their families can be saved. If everything they do for us has a moment for them every day as well. If you would, why don't we, could I ask you all to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The allegiance required. In this regard, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moderator is not aware of any recognitions. We do have a brief presentation from the select. And we'll do that now when you get set. So we have no recognition, so we'll do a brief presentation through the board of selection.
Basically, just to take this, as you know, we've been through the COVID crisis. We've received a lot of financial aid from state federal government. And we've also spent some ransom money responding to some of the situation that's been driven by the pandemic. COVID-19, COVID officer, this officer who did not have a productive role in the level of staff. The county was federal, the care is national, the damage to this was private property. And the select, uh, meetings, meetings of our mission boys were held on a toll. One of the highlights of the year is the higher duty police chief. Except for the reservation, she was fired for about thirty years in the department or T and G. The selectmen behind that, uh, the new point of the Scott Trump, who is actually a chief of the race. The selectmen increased using grant funding over the last couple of years. accomplished a new initiative, the Soli of Dispatch Services. Wilberham, uh, who stayed ready to save the country without the damage of the next three years. We've been, we shared Elgin Raven with the, uh, Congress, Ron Matt, Watson. And Wilberham, uh, the state is funding that, uh, what did he accept out of the world? We've entered into a record of the economy, so we're better. We got three hundred, eight hundred dollars in dollars identified. This is money that you should have in the correct way. We see the other thousand dollars ran through the office of President Asher. Tree work, and then the dead man, the three, one related. And we also received a hundred pound of crap. So the Indian Division was a small crosswalk connecting with the data panel with the three part of stage one. And probably also was part of the neighbor division ran through the purpose of more additional signs. You see that there's been also to go on. And, uh, now we've, you see one point five million dollars in our federal budget. Which enables us to, uh, take here on the screen. Use the mission moderation of mainstreams, connect to how long we have the fire department, fire department. That are generated by the fire department, the executive, the excavator, the highway department, and, uh, the school district. Schools are really. And the end, these board of selectmen want to thank Senator DeWalt, who has been telling us, calling our staff. That's the word, which is bringing us to the jury of the county. And that people said, oh, that's just a project, no, but we appreciate your help. And we're looking forward to doing this, 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 this. Thank you for the help.
Thank you. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the townspeople, town families, qualified folks, and town fairs to meet at the W. Burris Middle School 85 North Emerald Ham on Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, seven, seven o'clock in the evening, and there back on the problem card. The constables have posted the warrant, the warrant being duly served and waiting for a radio warrant and that be made part of the actual record. Please turn off all cell phone or at the very least silence them. I want to remind everyone, this meeting is our meeting, which you are meeting. It is designed for free and multi-discussions. Anyone who steps forward or render an awkward opinion or a comment should be respected for such effort. And we're not tolerating backcalls, moves, or anything else coming. Please remember, we are all friends and neighbors here. All questions must be addressed to the moderator. Please keep all questions, the discussion on point. A question may be moved by a member of the meeting or the moderator subject to a vote or the moderator's discretion. Please come to the microphone. Advisory committee does have a microphone, so if you want, if you have something, visit that, their microphone and state your name and address for the record. Again, I want to remind you, this is a separate meeting. Couple more notes, this meeting is being, is Zoom, but it is not for participation to those attending on Zoom. If you want to play, you got to come to the game. At the end of the evening, please leave the chairs where they are. The, uh, stowaway staff will be spraying the chairs in the morning for over. And then one last thing, just as a note, two more notes and we'll get started. There are bathrooms, go out the back door, there's a men's room and a women's room, and there is a sign on the doorstep. You use the ladies room men's room, turn the sign around so that someone knows that there's somebody who's there. And just one last thing, you were all, when you came in, you were given a yes, no ballot. Hopefully, can anybody not have a small perforated piece of paper with yes and no? One of our questions tonight is a secret ballot question. And at the time, that, that ballot will be brought forward. We'll have two counters here with a, with a box, one for the ballot itself and one for the discards. And that will be your secret ballot. And I hope you'll know how anyone who has been voted has voted. And we have two folks who are going to take votes and count them for us. We'll let you know when, just be sure to hold on to those because you are going to. All right, we're starting the meeting, but first the advisory committee, carry on some notes for us.
Good evening, everybody. See you, Jeremy.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carol Fitzgerald, uh, wonderful chair of the advisory committee. And, um, advisor committees over here, Doug, Boy, Professor Todd, Dan, Sheehan, and Padre Vassalado. Before we go to the floor, and I wanted to just give you a bit of our process this year and some of the considerations that you'll find in the room there. I'm sorry, if we use the microphone, it's, uh... All right, is that better? Do I need to start over? But we've been meeting, um, regularly since the end of January on Monday, and he thinks that's town hall. And we've asked all the departments to submit the level of service budget to ensure that we can continue to provide the quality of life services that the town delivers to its citizens. And the departments did a great job of providing all the information we needed. Very diligent in bringing us thoughtful and key budgets. We've worked collaboratively with the town treasurer, the town accountant, the town administrator, and the board of selectmen throughout this process. And in fact, the treasurer and the accountant have had in nearly every advisory meeting since January. And they provide us with valuable insight, perspective about the town's size and its collaboration. You'll see in the green sheets that the budget expenditures we're recommending tonight total fourteen million eight hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars, which represents a one point seven five percent increase in the operating budget. The advisory committee unanimously support all the line items that you identified in the budget. I've been spending quite a lot of time understanding the departments' need for the installation of president. As I stated earlier, we've dealt with all the departments and the board of selectmen of all four nations. And so Doug and I have fully participated in the school committees, budget subcommittee meetings along with our representative for Ryan. To ensure that the school budget is fair enough at the core. In terms of the overall budget figures, uh, this year includes an adjustment for non-organic tax fees. In our ongoing efforts to ensure that the town, as an employer, maintains competitive wages and helps it to be responsive to the recent federal coal adjustment. Board of selectmen invite shortly discussing the recommended five percent coal this year for our staff. You'll see those salary adjustments to the budget, uh, along with our contractual benefits to other staff. Some other highlights, I just wanted to point out, a way of noticing when we look at the green sheets at home. Um, there's been a decrease in county retirement this year. Uh, we think that will probably be temporary, it's the result of a change on, um, dispatch services. Uh, allowing some fortuitous timing of when that report gets submitted and the, um, the retirement payers get determined. You'll see an increase in board registrar, registrars, and as you know, an increase in election and the election requirements such as voting. There's also a slight increase in employee benefits cost due to changing on town contribution and health insurance. In a few departments, you'll see, um, that there's a different salary, either grade change or additional staffing, or a small number of hours increase in parks and rec and senior center than planning for. Uh, and you'll also notice, uh, at the end of the budget is our school assessment. We, um, made a reduction in the amount of, um, school assessment that was requested. Because we're carving out capital expense for some network switches at high school. Then for months of sixty thousand dollars, over sixty thousand dollars. We're going to use some of our urban lights to make those instead. So that's why that requested amount of secret general revenue. And, uh, primarily, uh, we have paid off the federal school debt after twenty years. I hope to say older class. Ask for a payment of one hundred eighty thousand dollars, so that's, that's a nice adjustment, um, reduction in our town operating budget. But in, uh, some of the later warrants in, um, meeting, uh, as typical at a municipal town meeting, we're going to defer, uh, the articles related to transfer to stabilization and a reduction in the tax rate. Those, um, will take up at our fall town meeting when we have a section of what we can access available, um, to be used for those purposes, maybe some capital items. And the board of selectmen, the treasurer, the county advisory, will all of our platter, we at that time, to make some, um, prudent decisions, uh, so we can stabilize any potential taxes in place of the reward. That's our overview.
Carol, we grew up together, you were smarter than me in school, and you continue to the same. You majored in law. Well, we're fine. We can have a little fun, Russell. Before we go any further, uh, Herb, Herb Foley is in the back. Herb, I can't thank you enough. Every single time we meet since I started up here, you've been right there with the town, you've had this place set up. Done incredibly well, and you're an awesome asset to the schools, to the school system. And I know superintendent is here, so that should be an herb. Okay, now we can get to what we're here for. Article one, to hear the annual town reports of all officers of the town and any committee who currently may need support at said meeting and act thereon to take any other actual action relevant to... We have a motion.
Mr. Senator, I'm in for the end of the report, the venue of our report, the year twenty twenty-one, second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisor recommends favorable action.
This requires a majority vote. All of us in favor, please hold up your hands. Are there any others? Motion carries. Article two, to see if the town can vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town and provided for by section one of the chapter forty-one general laws, to raise appropriate necessary sums to cover staying and to raise money to make appropriations to pray the expenses of the town in the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two, and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, or take any other action relevant thereto. We have a motion.
I vote that the sum of money shown in the column entitled fiscal twenty twenty-three draft recommendation and supplementary report of recommendation of the advisory committee, raised appropriately for the specific purposes designated and that the same gain spent in order such purposes, each number may be considered a separate appropriation. And further that the town raise and appropriate such sums as may be required in the price and charge as a fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
We have a motion, do we have a second? What does the advisory committee talk about its own motion?
You love it? Favorable action.
All right, now this is the, this is the part that everybody, this is the money. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read the total of each department, and then I'll check for any question. So what I'm asking you to do is if I read the total, put the question in the document that you're standing, the actual line that we're in, if we have any questions, raise your hand. Shout it out, whatever it does to get my attention, we'll address the question. That said, we're ready. Line item one, accountant, total accountant, sixty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars requested, sixty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars recommended. Line item number two, advisory committee, total advisory, five thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars requested, five thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars recommended. Line item three, board of appeals, total appeals, eight thousand four hundred thirty dollars recommended or requested, eight thousand four hundred thirty dollars recommended. Line item four, assessors, total assessors, requested one hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars, recommended one hundred thirty thousand five hundred and three dollars. Line item five, building department expenses, total building department, one hundred twenty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars requested, one hundred twenty-nine thousand ninety-three dollars recommended. Counting time, line six, six hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred forty-two dollars requested, six hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred forty-two dollars recommended. Insurance, line seven, total insurance, five hundred ten thousand three hundred dollars requested, five hundred ten thousand three hundred dollars recommended. Line item eight, law and claims, sixty-five thousand dollars requested, sixty-five thousand dollars recommended. Moderator, Doug, got a comment for me on that one? Oh, I thought you'd be faster than that. One hundred dollars requested, one hundred dollars recommended. Landing board, line ten, total landing board, thirty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars requested, thirty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars recommended. Line eleven, registrars, total registrars, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars requested, twenty thousand eight hundred forty dollars recommended. Selectmen, line twelve, total selectmen, one hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars requested, one hundred thirty thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars recommended. Line thirteen, tax clerk, total tax clerk, eighty-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars requested, eighty-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars recommended. Line fourteen, town clerk, total clerk, ninety-one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars requested, ninety-one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars recommended. Line fifteen, town report, three thousand requested, three thousand recommended. Line sixteen, treasurer. Total treasurer, sixty-seven thousand, uh, I'm sorry, eighty-four thousand two hundred eighteen dollars requested, eighty-four thousand two hundred eighteen dollars recommended. Line seventeen, veterans benefits, twenty thousand dollars requested, twenty thousand dollars recommended. Line nineteen, county administrator, ninety-five thousand dollars requested, ninety-five thousand dollars recommended. Total general government, two million one hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars requested, two thousand, two million one hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars recommended. We hit stop clock. Line twenty, academy hall things, forty-five hundred dollars requested, forty-five hundred dollars recommended. Cemetery commission, line twenty-one, total cemetery, thirty-three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars requested, thirty-three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars recommended. Line twenty-two, conservation commission, total conservation commission, thirty-eight thousand one hundred sixty dollars requested, thirty-eight thousand one hundred sixty dollars recommended. Line twenty-three, transfer station, total transfer station, twenty-five thousand requested, twenty-five thousand recommended. Twenty-four, school building repairs, fifteen thousand requested, fifteen thousand recommended. Line twenty-six, library, total library, one hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars recommended, requested one hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars recommended. Line twenty-seven, town events, one thousand five hundred dollars requested, one thousand five hundred dollars recommended. Line twenty-five, office equipment, total office equipment, eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars requested, eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars recommended. Parks and recreation, total parks and recreation, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars requested, eighty-five thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars recommended. Line thirty-two, townhouse maintenance, total townhouse maintenance, eighty-seven thousand dollars requested, eighty-seven thousand recommended. Line thirty-four, vehicles, three hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred eighty dollars requested, three hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred eighty dollars is the recommended. Moderator?
Yes, sir. Did you have a change of speaker, line mail row? Um, could you tell me, uh, we entered this agreement with the understanding there was easy opportunity for some reimbursement, uh, after the service got applied. Have we received any reimbursement, or is there any projected in the next year?
We have received any reimbursement, and, uh, there's, uh, either year, year of, we obviously do have reimbursement. Uh, at least last meeting with the evidence, expected that we might reach that level of issue.
Line thirty-five, gasoline, total gasoline, sixty thousand requested, sixty thousand recommended. Line thirty-six, street lighting, twenty-five thousand requested, twenty-five thousand recommended. Line thirty-seven, council on aging, total council on aging, one hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred forty-six dollars requested, one hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred forty-six dollars recommended. Line thirty-eight, senior centers, thirty-eight thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars requested, thirty-eight thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars recommended. Historical commission, line thirty-nine, four hundred dollars requested and the same one recommended. Total general town services, one million two hundred five thousand nine hundred twenty dollars requested, one million two hundred three thousand four hundred twenty dollars recommended. Open, okay? Highway department, line forty, super, uh, line forty superintendent salary, ninety-seven thousand four eighty requested, ninety-seven thousand four eighty recommended. Line forty point one, departmental payroll, two hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars requested, two hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars recommended. Line forty-one, tree work, total tree work, fifty-nine thousand ninety dollars requested, fifty-nine thousand ninety dollars recommended. Line forty-two, public grounds, four thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars requested, four thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars recommended. Line forty-three, highway vehicles, total highway vehicles, three hundred fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars requested, three hundred fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-two is the recommended number as well. Line forty-four, general highway expense, fifteen thousand six hundred forty-five dollars requested, fifteen thousand six hundred forty-five dollars recommended. Snow and ice streams, one hundred thousand dollars requested, one hundred thousand dollars recommended. Contracts services, line forty-six, total contract services, sixty-three thousand seven hundred thousand requested, sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars recommended. Line forty-seven, other highway, are you ready? I'm sure. Other highway accounts, total shooting occasions, eighteen thousand requested, eighteen thousand recommended. Line forty-eight, building expenses, fifty thousand requested, fifty thousand recommended. Whole highway department, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars requested, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars recommended. Protection of persons and property, line fifty, total in one session, total in one session, five thousand seven hundred seventy dollars is requested, or five thousand seven hundred seventy dollars is recommended. Line fifty-one, emergency management, five thousand requested, five thousand recommended. Line fifty-one point five, traffic control, fifteen thousand requested, fifteen thousand recommended. Line fifty-two, dog officer, total dog officer, fourteen thousand eighty-six dollars requested, fourteen thousand eighty-six dollars recommended. Fire department, line fifty-three, total fire department, three hundred eighty-one thousand fourteen dollars requested, three hundred eighty-one thousand fourteen dollars recommended. Line fifty-four, forest fires control, one thousand eight hundred dollars requested, one thousand eight hundred dollars recommended. Line fifty-six, for help. All right, we have totals, are, do you both have an opinion?
Moderator, I would recommend line sixty-six point four, help, worth, eighty-seven hundred dollars.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have only have a motion and a second, for eighty-seven hundred dollars, we added for line fifty-six point four. Does the advisory have our condition?
If I figure, I'm going to take a look.
Amendment to budgets of this finding itself will require a vote. Uh, so all is in favor of eighty-seven hundred dollars, please answer. Is there any questions or discussion on the question? There's one here.
Do we have an explanation of why we're getting an herb?
Before we did that theory, just your names and your records?
Uh, Gary Moynor, fifty-three, Hill Row.
And so, do you guys have any, have any questions?
Basically, we've seen the year before, we had customers, and when the letter was submitted, like that line, we were zeroed out. And it was, uh, so, what am I to conceal, well, he had a lot of other board, and a prior year, and this is due to the service account.
But, any other questions? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote, eighty-seven hundred dollars, please. Are there any opposed? Motion carries. That changed the vote for our help number two, seventy-one thousand three hundred six dollars requested, seventy-one thousand three hundred six dollars recommended. Line fifty-six point five, water district, total water district, thirteen thousand dollars requested, thirteen thousand dollars recommended. Line fifty-seven, police. One thousand, I'm sorry, one million five hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars requested, one million five hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars recommended. Line fifty-eight, other police accounts. Three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars requested, three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars recommended. Total police, one million five hundred thirty thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars requested, one million five hundred thirty thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars recommended. Line fifty-nine, police and fire communications, twenty-five thousand nine fifty is requested, twenty-five thousand nine fifty is recommended. Total protect, protection, U number, two million sixty-three thousand one hundred five dollars is requested. Come on, I'll just, I'll, yeah, two million sixty-three thousand one hundred five is recommended? Okay, I, I don't know why I thought it was really good, thanks. Schools, line sixty-nine, total regional school district, total amount requested, seven million eight hundred forty thousand six hundred ninety dollars. Totally recommended, seven million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars recommended. Totally recommended, seven million, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars recommended. Local debt, total, total local government debt, six hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred requested, six hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred recommended. That brings our grand total of the budget to fourteen million nine hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars requested, fourteen million eight hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars recommended. That is your total budget. We'll get it, are any questions? We'll answer them, if not, this requires a majority vote on the total number just read. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article three, prior year bills, to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of any departmental bills as fiscal two thousand twenty-one or previous years, and will raise appropriate sum of money, therefore will take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
Moderator, we've looked at the town, we have no action.
So that typically means there are no previous bills and a vote to take no action will require a majority vote after the advisory committee makes the recommendation. Motion second?
She's more important.
Come.
Advisory of that point's favorable action, um, no action.
So again, vote to take no action requires a majority vote, all those in favor of no action? Are there any opposed? No, she cares. Article four. This, uh, fiscal two thousand twenty-three spending limits for revolving funds. To see if the town will authorize the following codes expenditures for each of the following funds pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, to be expended in accordance with the bylaws, where it's approved or approved, or take any other action relative thereto. The funds involved are the building department fund, eighty-five thousand is the number, the cemetery commission fund, thirty thousand is the number, council on aging fund, from thousands is the number, library fund, three thousand dollars, conservation commission, twenty-five thousand, banking fund, ten thousand, we have motion.
Um, this moderator, I moved the town vote to authorize all over ventures or all of the funds in amounts not received or listed in the following, pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three and a half, for fiscal twenty twenty-three, building department fund, eighty-five thousand, cemetery commission fund, thirty thousand, council on aging fund, twenty-one thousand, library fund, three thousand, conservation commission fund, forty-five thousand.
You said, you said a hundred things, did you say ten thousand or one hundred thousand? I'm trying to make sure it's better, ten thousand, okay.
I want to make sure it's back to you, right?
We've got a motion, we have a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
That's motion second, we have a recommendation, are there any questions on the funds? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article five. Enterprise fund transfer station, to see if the town will appropriate some of money for the operations of the transfer station, determine whether the money shall be provided by the estimated income to be derived in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three from the operations of the transfer station by the tax letting, by transfer of available funds, including the retained earnings of the relevant enterprise fund, or by any combination of these national entities, or take any other action relative there.
Moderator, a little bit of town vote to appropriate the following amounts of the transfer station enterprise fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, thirty thousand dollars salary, sixty thousand, fifteen hundred dollars of this made its expense for a total of ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars. And that, that ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars raised to fall, the department receives ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars.
We've got a motion, we've got a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
We've got a motion, a second, is there any question? Seeing none, this also requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article six, community preservation fund, to see if the town will appropriate or reserve from community preservation annual revenue in the amounts recommended by the community preservation for community administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other projects in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation or take any other action relative thereto. Do this in your part, right, by the, yeah?
Yes, okay. Uh, Mr. Moderator, we have two requests, uh, seeing two separate options. The first motion is that the town vote to appropriate twenty-eight thousand dollars from the community preservation fund for the purpose of changing the door locks at ten p.m.
Got a motion and a second on the twenty-eight thousand, does the advisory have a recommendation?
We didn't get to the end yet.
There are none, are there any questions? This would require a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries, we have a second.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, uh, I move that the town will appropriate twenty-nine thousand four hundred six dollars of the community preservation fund for the purpose of maintaining the planning of this park. Positive vote, please, plus, before, maybe, if we can look at how we, scheduled on May sixteen, two thousand twenty-two,
We've got a motion, we've got a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisor recommends favorable action.
This requires a favorable of majority vote, before then, are there any questions? By someone? Yeah?
Glenn Daley. Hope I just have an explanation on that, please, Doug?
Yes, we have. This, this is the, uh, the field project, charter project of the high school, that was originally for town missions, two thousand eighteen. At that time, uh, we appropriated sixty thousand, sixty thousand thousand. Um, and that was contingent upon, um, since that was two things, select for of situation completion of the project. That's the word was satisfied, third, it's basically presented, so that expenditure is made. Unfortunately, who's got, uh, who's, the group is probably, obviously, fallen short on fundraising, uh, COVID came on short on funding. I understand of also, uh, some cost overruns. Tell on that, we have, I thought it This essentially, this second question. What's name, but?
And again, the understanding of this, our vote is contingent upon it passing in overhand as well, because it's a joint effort financial.
Correct.
Okay, so make sure it's already heard. Any other questions? This as well requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article seven, conservation fund, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the conservation fund. Said fund to be used for the purpose of acquiring available land in the town for conservation purposes. If said purchase is voted upon and approved at an annual or special town meeting, prior to such purchase, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ted Jiver, conservation commission. See if I can read this. I move that the town raise appropriate one thousand dollars for the conservation fund and the fund to be used for the purpose of acquiring, uh, available land in the town for conservation purposes if said purchase is voted to and approved at an annual or special town meeting or decide to purchase.
Do we have a second? We have a second, we have a motion, a second, Roger.
Advisor recommends favorable action?
Any questions on the town? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Article eight, chapter nine, state highway aid, to see if the town will vote to accept the sum of money from the Capitol of Massachusetts under the provisions of local aid fund distribution in accordance with chapter nine, section thirty-four of the national laws in the transportation department's chapter nine guideline, and be allowed to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to accept two hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars from Capitol of Massachusetts under general laws, chapter nine, section thirty-four, be allowed to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement.
Got a motion, we have a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
Are there any questions? Right, as much as the potential for borrow will exist for this question, two-thirds majority is required, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article ten, library officials state aid, to see if the town will vote that in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, if state aid for the library received, this money will be made available to the library trustees to use in their discretion or take any other action relative thereto.
I don't know where people library, I move that this town vote that in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, if state aid received, the hand in for the library this time will be available to hand in library trustees to use at their discretion.
Motion, we have a second, does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
We have a motion, a second, a favorable recommendation, are there any questions? This requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article ten, additional compensation for assessors. I'm gonna read the header of this, but I'm not gonna read the body of it. But please, look at it, if there are any questions, we'll seek to address them. Article ten, additional compensation for assessors, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one A, which entitle a member of the third assessor, principal assessor, or assistant, assistant assessor, needing to be fired or disbarred, to additional compensation to the enemy through the amount of up to ten percent of regular compensation, providing that in accordance to the additional compensation exceed five hundred dollars for a part-time employee, or one thousand dollars for a full-time employee, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I would move that the town vote to accept chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one A of Massachusetts general laws to create a conditional incentive for the town's assessors to become certified.
We have a motion, we have a second, does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable actions?
Got a motion, a second, we have the recommendation, right, any question? Are you set, you sure? Okay, so no questions, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article eleven, additional compensation for collectors and treasurers. To see if the town will vote to accept following global legislation. And it looks like I'm gonna need to read this one, because it doesn't give us a relative thereto. So, legislation, chapter forty-one, section one oh eight P, in the state, town, or district that accepts this section, a collector or a treasurer who has completed the necessary courses of study and training and has been awarded a certificate by the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association as a certified Massachusetts municipal collector, or a certified Massachusetts municipal treasurer, or certified Massachusetts district treasurer, shall receive this compensation from such city, town, or district in addition to their regular compensation paid by such city, town, or district for services in such office and amount equal to ten percent of the regular annual compensation, but not more than one thousand dollars per year. A collector or treasurer who has been awarded all certificates referred to above shall receive such additional compensation for only one such certificate. In order to qualify for such additional compensation, the collector or treasurer shall submit to the mayor or the board of collectors to such severe town, or the governing, or, or district, proof of the award that either or both are such certificates. The additional compensation provided in this section shall be pro-rated for any vote on period in which the eligible person does not hold the office of collector or treasurer for twelve consecutive months. Such additional compensation shall be discontinued when certification is discontinued or or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept chapter forty-one, section one oh eight P, that's a Peter, of the Massachusetts general law to create a financial incentive for the town's treasures and collectors to achieve certain.
Got a motion, we have a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
Any questions or discussions, Jim?
Moderator, uh, this one, the previous article, and I, I, I'm not asking for both that, but there seems to be, uh, a, a recommendation that cert, achieving certain, uh, educational goals to be translated into additional, uh, compensation, uh, not unlike the Quin bill. Uh, what I'm concerned about is that this targets certain town employees, but other employees who may achieve their own certifications, their own field of expertise, don't have the same opportunity. So I would, a recommendation to the planning, but to the director, man, uh, that when they're looking and it's like when you're looking at salaries overall, you take that into consideration.
So I, I would take that as a comment, Jim, to the board, as opposed to, is it a question? Okay, which is fine, just making sure we need to hang. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? This motion carries. Article twelve, transfer assessors stabilization funds in general, to see if the town will transfer the remaining balance of the assessors stabilization fund to the general fund and close out the assessors stabilization fund and take any other action relative thereto.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to close out the assessors stabilization fund and transfer the remaining balance of five hundred and eight dollars and thirty-two cents in said account to the town general fund.
We have a second. We've got a motion, we've got a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisor recommends favorable action?
Are there any questions or discussion from the floor? Seeing none, inasmuch as this involves transferring money out of the stabilization account it provided, we require the two-thirds of all, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirteen, assessors funding for state mandated programs, to see if the town will raise appropriate and or transfer on available funds a sum of money to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue mandated programs or take any other action relative thereto. I bet you want that one. Can you read?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer fifty thousand dollars from the assessors over lay reserve to enable the board of assessors to comply with Massachusetts private revenue mandated program.
Got a motion, we have a second, does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisor recommends favorable action?
Does anybody on the floor have any question? Seeing one? Yeah?
That's from, from what?
They said that over lay reserve. That was it, yeah. Good, okay. Right, so we've got a motion, a second, a recommendation, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fourteen, school resource officer, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate interest transfer from the build funds, a sum of money from school resource officer, or FY two thousand twenty-two, at Virginia Regional High School, take any action relative thereto. at Minutawalk Regional High School, take any action relative there to.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise appropriate eleven thousand six hundred dollars to pay the school resource officer for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two at Minutawalk Regional High School.
I heard the second, so we've got the motion, we've got the second. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
Any questions from the, from the, seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Article fifty, now I'll tell you, um, we'll need a second norm, this is the question that will require a secret ballot. And before we do it, I'm just gonna walk through it one more time. So once we go through reading the question, the motion, the advisory recommendation and discussion, the way you're gonna vote is you're gonna pick that appropriate stupid paper, you're gonna go for the box, your vote, your actual vote's gonna go in one box, your discards is gonna go in other boxes. And then while we continue the meeting, uh, taking normal for the town to vote for us, okay? All right, article fifty, municipal lighting plant, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to take all necessary and appropriate actions to establish and maintain in accordance with the provisions of chapter ninety-four of the General Laws in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plant for the purposes to allow a vote under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation the operation of the telecommunication systems and any related services, or take any other action relative there to.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote by secret ballot to authorize the board of selectmen to take appropriate action to establish, in accordance with provisions of chapter one sixty-four of the General Laws, in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plant for purposes to allow a vote under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation the operation of telecommunication systems and any related.
We have a motion, we have a second. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
Oh, now I'm gonna cover the vote one more time. Does anybody have any questions on what we're doing here? Jim?
Not a question on the vote, but can, we have a question, the first time we've ever seen a, um, you know, a secret ballot, so is that part of the legislation that's for this?
So, before, yes, from a moderator's perspective, and Craig will absolutely be prepared to answer questions. This is the second vote, this actually required, so in special time we need in the fall, we addressed this question, and there was a secret ballot taken at that time. The statute requires two secret ballots, this would be the second one. And so that's, if you're burning the big ball, how many is required when you see it? But this would be the second vote, the second vote of the two. Um, and then again, and I got where you were going, um, I wanted to answer you procedurally, but I also wanna make sure if there are any questions about the actual motion and the text, what we're talking about here. Yes, sir.
What, what is the telecommunication system that is mentioned in this?
The telecommunication would just mean municipal broadband service, fire rock, and internet. That's what that refers to in this instance for what our general purposes are. It just allows us the option to explore a municipal fire rock to.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing, oh, I'm sorry, there is a, my, my.
What is the sole purpose of the board bringing this forward? What is the effect of what we also have happened?
We're hoping to offer our residents more, more reliable internet service. And by doing this, establishing an M L P in the municipal lighting act, we can proceed with issuing state grants, state funds, help us look into the options of what we can do to help us.
Jim?
I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the, the open-endedness of this. You know, I understand what you're doing, and I, I believe in paper, or municipal, um, fire rock system, but since to do it well under the law, yeah, and I'm worried about opening this up for.
Unfortunately, it's the legislation that requires the M L P to be established to form a municipal project and be brought into the weeds, so it's part of the second to rules. Do this, kind of town off.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so let's try and do this, I'm just, as you did it, it's not easy, but it's kind of even for us, because we should be able to pull enough. If we can work, maybe as best we can, from this end, forming a straight line as you're reaching the table. Again, you are already checked in, recently passed the ballots, the way you have them, is because when you were checked in as a voter, we're also checked in to vote in a secret ballot. So if we can form a line, just work our way back to our seats, you can do a straight line here, again. Your vote goes in the vote ballot, and then your discard, there will be a discard. Okay, article sixteen, special act for an empty firefighter. And includes a base instruction, verified red, that, um, so article sixteen again, act for an firefighter, to see if the town will vote to authorize the special action, the Massachusetts General Court, to permit an empty firefighter to continue to serve in the Massachusetts State of Sixty Club as potentially to the age of seven. Section one, not understanding any general or special watch or control of Peter Hatch, a member of the firefighter from the county area, may continue to serve in such possession until the age of seven. The lady is retiring for non-male employment, or the lady is relieved of his duties by the town, which hours of her service, providing that her husband is physically capable of performing the duties of his office, and providing further, at the time of its own expense, require that firefighter hatch to examine and pressure position, as a decision taken by the general authority. No introduction to the lady's late conversations by firefighter hatch, according to chapter thirty-two of the General Laws, for any service subsequent to his reaching the age of sixty-five, and extra for the service of the town for retirement or pension purposes. And upon retirement, the firefighter hatch shall receive a superannuation retirement allowance to school to, that, which he would have been entitled had he retired at age sixty-five. This is not, she'll think that on his past, on his past.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to file a special act of the Massachusetts General Court, permit empty firefighter Peter Hatch to continue to serve past the oral age of sixty-five, until potentially seventy years of age. Which, by the way, is still younger than the age of right now.
We have a motion, we have a second, we got a second. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action?
We have a motion, we have a second. Under, in the advisory recommendation, are there any questions? That said, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article seventeen, local option acceptance of clause twenty-two, veterans exception, exemption. To see if the town will adopt a local option, so that veterans exemption are billable pursuant to General Laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clauses twenty-two and twenty-two A and twenty-two F, may be granted to otherwise eligible persons who have resided in the Commonwealth for one year prior to the date of filing, for exemptions pursuant to the applicable clause, or take any other action relevant there. This shows the assessors on the trip, can you guys take a look?
Right back, right back in that.
You are.
I, I move that the town vote to adopt the local option, to permit veterans to qualify for veterans exemptions, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two and twenty-two A through twenty-two F, after residing in Massachusetts for one year.
We have a motion, we have a second. Here too, so we have a motion, second, five.
Advisory recommends favorable action?
Are there any questions or discussion? Yeah, I see a question.
Jack's going forty-six, Martin Farren wrote, um, what is the exemption's problem?
Absolutely.
You know, if you need one, you can ask.
Yeah, I got it.
It's for a veteran, a veteran that meets certain requirements. Um, so they have a number of requirements, but basically the, um, the veteran D P C, our veteran association, I'm sorry, has given them a disability rating of a certain percentage, saying that they qualify for it. They, I'm, I'm a real estate tax.
Certainly. Thank you.
That answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, are there any other questions? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Before we go any further, we'll go back to article fifty, and thank you both, Dickens, for working the count for us, and as fast as we can get back into the game, like changing shifts with the roles, yep. All right, this, the, uh, article fifty did require two-thirds vote to pass, and it did. Split seventy-nine, yes, and ten, no. We are now on article eighteen. I am not gonna read the entire text of the article, only the whole section. Article eighteen, procedure for filling sworn committee vacancies, to see if the town will vote for that time by law and spotters. The provision of this section shall apply to all appointments, including. This is actually, it takes me to read the entire text, but I'm actually gonna back off on that for one second and see what. So article eighteen, again, procedure for filling sworn committee vacancies. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to take no action, Mr. Moderator.
We have a motion to take no action, we have a second to take no action. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory committee recommends favorable action, if not no action.
I see why I don't pitch you through the entire meeting. Inasmuch as we have a motion to take no action, or are there any questions on this? Seeing none. Oh, it's a, very own new question.
Yeah, was this motion presented by the selectmen?
Yes.
And, and why did they change their mind and want no action now?
There, there was a number of, there was a number of questions and a number of amendments that have made very difficult for the statements, so we'll bring it up on the other.
Again, so we have a motion to take no action, requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to article nineteen. Article nineteen is a citizen petition, and we do have a citizen with us to make the motion. Article nineteen, again, citizen petition, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to investigate, and if feasible, to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement for certain properties and parcels of land currently known as Two Summers Road, current open parentheses, five point eight one acres, parcel ID twelve dash forty dash zero, closed parentheses, and sixteen Summers Road, open parentheses, three point four, seven acres, parcel ID twelve dash oh three nine dash zero zero zero, closed parentheses, and any, and/or any portion thereof, or take any other action upon terms that the board of selectmen need to be in the best interest of the town. This is a citizen petition, that runs with the motion.
Ted Brown, forty-five, I'm sorry, I have to re-read that whole thing. I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to investigate, and if feasible, to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement for certain properties and parcels of land currently known as Two Summers Road, five point eight one acres, parcel ID twelve dash forty dash zero, and sixteen Summers Road, three point four seven acres, parcel ID twelve dash oh three nine, dash zero zero zero, and/or any portion thereof, or take any other action upon terms that the board of selectmen need to be in the best interest of the town.
We've got a motion, we have a second. There is a second, we have, so we have both. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory committee recommends negative action, or.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a split vote, negative action to the advisory committee. Does anyone on the floor have any questions? Get up, Terry first.
Uh, Terry Reiner, Chris Greenville wrote, uh, question from his selectmen, do they have any use for that bar called media? My comment would be that. My comment would be that this seems to set a very bad precedent. In that those two parcels are business parcels. Recognizing that the self-storage units went down to defeat. Means that those parcels now can be looked at for other interests. Walking twenty-four hour health center, business, small businesses for our. Community later on, our kids may want to be professional accountants or whatever, may have small offices there. My understanding is that the self-storage offer potentially a hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes on both those parcels. That means a hundred thousand potentially over the next years and years and years. And if the selectmen don't have or use for that parcel. I think we recognize what it is, is a buffer from the residential community. Now, I am empathize with the people who have their backyards there on the business property. However, I think the location can be used for business that also will lend to the residents there. And the potential cost of the town here is significant. If you've looked at what is proposed for the self-storage. And with future use, they are, the town can be looking at potentially a half a million dollars or more in acquisition costs. For those parcels. I would suggest that the citizens group who already have an attorney. Have their attorney enter negotiations for those parcels and possibly acquire them through their citizen partners' page. But to ask the town residents, all the town residents here to participate in that expenditure, I think is. Going a little beyond where the selectmen should be involved at this point.
Eleven, eleven. I just want to follow it, so I have a queue set up here, right? The next, next is Joe Sibillia. Joe, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Joe Sibillia, eleven thousand and eleven. Although Gary presents a nice case. And we're suggesting that the selectmen can apply. Oh, we're really glory about it. To investigate the purchase and sale of this property. This doesn't mean that we're going to buy a property in the town. There's a number of ways that we could buy it. We could develop a public, private partnership and have some sustainable development. We could have private enterprise cooperate with the town that makes up the airheads. That could be world class, could be environmentally, could be sustainable, could be a place where people could showcase innovations. For environment and sustainability. And that just happened in self-storage today. On top of the other. And then that wasn't really the spot for a self-storage company. Where can you put there? Something that's innovative, that's creative, that can benefit the town. If we allow the selectmen to investigate this opportunity, they will find all kinds of situations. You know, so this, they're really glory about authorizing the selectmen to investigate this possibility. If it's a viable option to that, it's not strictly down by the files.
Okay, um, I see Jed's on the boat, but I see Bob Howard.
Bob Howard, good work. This is not binding on the selectmen. And there's nothing that requires them to take any action out of it. As they're already.
You, I see the, I see a affirmative, this is not binding on the selectmen? Okay, it's not. Alright, this, okay, this, I want to make sure it's clear. Citizen petition is not binding on the selectmen to execute any action. So it is a recommendation and I have to mark three corners, so the vote is non-viable. Any, um, hold on a second, Jed, another question? Jed.
Edward Litterman, better road. I think the number would be upwards from one point five million dollars. Based on the assessed values and my understanding of market value relating to assessed values. Now, I comment. Also that I don't think there's any other use it's feasible unless we bring in water and sewer. Which was up and down in a previous town meeting. You might want to revisit that. I also don't see the need for this. If it's an advisory suggestion to the board, I don't think they need my authority to negotiate and then present the able to vote to buy. They can just go ahead and do it now.
I don't want to miss anybody.
Jason, so the thirty nine control, I just had a question if the selectmen had opinions on this article. First, let me find who's. Direct to them.
Question is due.
We haven't had enough. My concern with this article, that's as practical, it seems to me, and I don't know what the news now, but it seems to me that. There were development that came in, there were groups of people that didn't like it, now they're, we're asking the town to vote to buy. It sets a bad precedent for any kind of development project that comes up in future. If there's a group of folks that don't like it. Back for Tommy, we're going to ask the town, the rest of the town, both states.
Fair enough. Any other questions? I see John Adams.
John Adams, where it wants to roll. And I understand this is just a citizen petition. Asking the selectmen to invest. That's all it is. No further than that. And it's up to the selectmen. To either participate in negotiations or even for the people that own that land. To even participate in offering it up per se. So alls we're doing is really asking the selectmen. Tonight. To at least look at the possibility. I think it moves more to the point of in the future, what the selectmen are going to do, okay? So just a comment, like you said, nothing. Fair enough, you don't have a lot to do here.
Are there any other questions or comments?
So, and these are good points, but again, like Jonathan said, it's like, yes, vote tonight. We don't spend any money. All we're doing is having these guys. Get in a little around a desk and decide what we want to do, all of the arguments that you brought up. We've been having the opportunity to do that as a town. Come the fall, when there's a price, if there's a price. And then we vote on it, we can have all these discussions about right or wrong, right? What we're going to do, if all of that comes later, all we're looking for is a yes tonight. To give them the opportunity to do that, it's a positive push to these guys and says the towns behind.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's our circle. My concern would be, we got like probably assessed nine and a half to one on the two properties. So around this tax revenue and as other people have mentioned. If we can do it to those two parcels, can we do it to all the other parcels that we don't like in town? I got six acres next to my lot that I'd like to.
Alright, now, alright, hold on everybody, let's stay in play here. Are there any other questions or comments? Make sure everybody gets an opportunity to citizen petition. Yes, sir, Mr. Whitaker.
Tyler Whitcup, Cardi Road. I was, we've heard a lot about. Questions, comments, I was, I'm interested in the selectmen. How high on your left under my organs would this be should it pass? Would it be active? The atmosphere is okay.
Fair enough. I think this question came in in a different way, but I don't need. Um, hold on one second, next second. Let me start again, just to make sure I catch up, yes?
I believe that, yeah, that's. What you said, yes, all tonight will give the selectmen the authority to investigate.
Hey, now I thought I saw that again. I want to avoid the redundant parts, so.
Yeah, as Craig indicates, there's legal proceedings. I think the vote on that property would be inappropriate to take a vote on something to the courts.
It is a citizen petition and it isn't, so to be allowed. And what would happen to it, it happened to the different. Very.
Oh, I appreciate that the citizen petition only by. I'm wondering if you do negotiate, if you decide to enter into it, if you do negotiate a purchase and sale agreement. Does that agreement have to come back to the town versus the local? And then the app, the app, the added phrase at the end of these articles says, take any other action. That the selectmen need to be invested in the town. Do you know what that will include? Or would you, once you took any other action, you would come back to the town for authorization to go forward with that?
Go back for that.
So really, it's just giving the sense of the, of this committee. Voting on this, if they approve this, it just gives you a sense that this group feels that you should look into it. That they endorse you.
That seems to be an understanding, I want to be careful, starting a little on the question, second, or vote. But Gary, one more, are you?
Just one point. If the selectmen do enter into this idea of feasibility. It's going to cost us money because they're going to have to ask the attorney at some point during the negotiation. For opinions which are going to cause all the back pay. And quite frankly, like I say, I think that it would be, we would be better served to let the citizens petition people. Move it forward if they want to acquire a land.
Okay, um, we'll do, Jay, go ahead.
Question, under the twenty first preservation act, how much money do we have in that one currently?
Do you have a number?
March fourth, we got five hundred and six thousand dollars. So we all as taxpayers have contributed to that. This is for purposes of maintaining the community of him. And I would suggest the selectmen do move to have a dialogue in this. That they consider using some of those funds and some additional funds for the purchase. And we are negotiating with seller possibly. It's possibly a tax benefit for the seller. Consider a donation of the individual with benefits to the federal tax department associated.
Okay, so we won't. Hold on one second, this advisory never asks questions. And this is going to be the last one. I was going to do that. Alright, we've had all the discussion. We've got a motion, a second, recommendation, we had a floor discussion, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? This looks too close to me, you know? Trying to see it again, I want to get a count, I'm sure. And you guys counsel the room? What if?
Somebody got to move the question, right? Move with the question?
No, I move the question. And I can do that by my discretion. I was, alright, I was going to do it anyway. Comments filed about all of them being partial. It's slow to sound. Alright, so now as opposed to moderator, we think the question, we have a motion to move the question. We have a second, is there any questions? Second, advisor.
Favorable action.
All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by raising your hands. That, I will move the question. Now, back to the point. The vote, the numbers are really close, I don't want to get this wrong. If you guys split the way, you can count on one of your notes. If you take the right side or if you take the left. Start like right behind Ted, if there's any. Going to ask that all those in favor, please raise your cards and fold them up so we can get a count.
I have twenty-one.
Right now, you have twenty-one. Did you guys count it, Ted? Did you get it on?
Did you get it on? No, I did not. Nor Ted.
Okay, so make this one and three, it's twenty-one.
Now I'm going to have all of the against, raise your cards and fold them up while we get the count. Twenty. The fours are forty-four, the against are thirty-one, the motion carries. Thank you both again. Article twenty, advisory committee reserve fund. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and or transfer available funds in some way from the advisory committee reserve fund. Or take any other action relevant there to.
Mr. Moderator, I think the town will raise appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to the advisory committee reserve fund this year. Two thousand twenty-three.
A second? A motion, a second, how do you feel about your own motion?
We love it, favorable action.
Any questions from the floor? This requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-one, general stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote, borrow, raise, and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money. The general stabilization fund or take any other action relevant there to.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on this article.
We have a motion and a second to take no action, how do you feel about your motion?
Fantastic.
As you all know. The take no action requires majority vote, but before, are there any questions from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Our final act of the night, Article twenty-two, reducing the tax rate. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the general stabilization fund a sum of money for purpose of reducing the tax rate. For fiscal two thousand twenty-three or take any other action relative there to. Advisor?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on this article.
Second. Got a second. And I have to ask again, are you?
Favorable action, not no action.
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we've got a motion, second, recommendations, requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries on and a motion adjourned. Motion second. We are done, have a great night and thank you.